Michael York. Victoria Ames. Charlie Harbeck. And alternate Steve Malone. Michael Scumgeal alternate and Jane Johnson alternate. And we have a full board, so we don't need the alternates, so we'll proceed. Tonight's agenda. We have. Approval of the minutes for November twenty first. And under public hearings, we have planning board number twenty four dash zero two six. It's a boundary line adjustment application. Cardinals surveying and land planning have submitted this application on behalf of Kenneth and Marveline Garand. And Carolyn Beatty. Properties are located at tax map one zero six lot sixty nine and seventy and are within the rural agricultural district. Item B warrant article, public hearing zoning amendments one through seven. Under discussions and other business, we have twenty twenty five planning board meeting schedule. Let's draft review. And wetlands conservation district proposed amendments. And anything else that comes up? Back to the beginning, regional impact. Is there anything on our agenda that requires regional impact? Is that a motion or is that just a? Motion by Michael York that nothing on our.
I was answering your question.
You are, okay. That nothing on our agenda would require a regional impact or us to notify the surrounding towns seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed. That's that. Bring us to the approval of minutes of November twenty first, twenty twenty four. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? So motion by Richard to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion, changes or alterations? And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed. And we got past that. Bring us to a public hearing. That's the number twenty four dash zero two six, the boundary line adjustment. And that would be Cardinal surveying. Now let's see what we have here. We have a drawing in our packets and they all have a drawing. And we have the application in the packet as well. Which all to me looks to be in order. And then they've. Provided everything. That they've needed to on the checklist. Some things do not apply as they've checked off on there. Asking for no waivers. Anybody see anything different? If not. Then a motion to accept the application is complete in order. Second, motion by Mike to accept the application is complete seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed. Now we move on to the public hearing and you're up.
My fellow Cardinals surveying, I'm getting Darren's end of these. So this is map. It's the third house in on the right. All this is to correct the lot line currently a lot line. I'm showing green, those three corner of the Darren's house. And this was noticed these are selling there. Well, they sold this one or the property was taught in this one also. There was most of the new tax maps. On the areas that. So all we're doing is an equal area lot, a lot of my adjustment because these lots don't need current zoning. Current zoning is three acres and two hundred and twenty five feet of land, which are two point one eight, two point three seven acres with. So we're doing this taking the line down around the house. Equal areas, so nothing changes.
Okay, pretty simple. Yep, pretty simple. And again, all they're doing is trying to make it conforming, a little bit more conforming. It's not all conforming. And then are there any questions from the board? And there's nobody in the public and I'm public and. You had a question, Mark?
Yeah, I just. You know that house is on septic and town or is town water? Is it well?
The house.
If it's in the front, that's that's not a problem. In the back, maybe you didn't need a setback, but.
Anyone on Zoom? Nope. Okay. Then if there are no further questions. I will close the public hearing. Public hearing closed. Michael, your motion. Okay, motion by Michael York to approve the lot line adjustment seconded by Mark. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. There you go. You're welcome. Bring this to our warrant articles, public hearings. And that would be amendment one through seven. And we've had them here and we've. Probably read them about a million times. I will open up the public hearing. Amendment number one. Are you in favor of the adoption of amendment number one as proposed by the planning board to amend the Swansea zoning ordinance ordinance as follows? And this would be to amend section. Thirteen by adding amending or removing the following definitions. Again, we're crossing out corporate offices, replacing that with business offices. And the definition is buildings, building or buildings used primarily for conducting the affairs of business, industry or government. Which may include ancillary services for office workers such as. A restaurant or coffee shop, healthcare facility or daycare facility. At our last meeting, we decided to. Cross out such as a restaurant, coffee shop, healthcare facility or daycare facility, because some of those zones don't allow that in there. But we can't really suggest that those to go in there. It'd be on a case by case basis. So. What we had decided. Was. To stop it. Uh, right after the workers. So it read uh, or government which may include ancillary services for office workers, period. So.
So that would be so on the final version, then. Everything after workers will not be there.
That's right. Yeah, we'd figure that last time yet because of some of those zones don't allow those uses in there.
Oh, yeah, I think I have.
So. We're changing that a fair amount. So that particular amendment probably should go on our next public hearing.
Yeah, we get amendment number one. Yeah, let's do that.
That was amendment number one and we're. We're. Crossing out. From you have a copy of it there, right? Beverly or do you have? We're crossing out right from. Okay.
I was reading the wrong one.
Maybe I've got the wrong one.
No, I'm sure you were.
You're going by the one in the package.
Yes.
That's the one he's referring and I would not refer into that one.
Okay.
Is you're moving office worker?
Nope.
That's the last word.
That's the last word and such as starts as such as we're crossing that out. So we're giving no example and it'll be a case basis.
Yep, so we'll add that. So the next public hearing will include that.
That one. Yeah, good. Okay, service establishment. And that definition for that, we're adding that in. That definition for that is provides a skilled service, personal labor or expertise. As opposed to providing a product or tangible commodity. We're adding retail establishment, definition of that, sales in small quantities and or direct to the consumer. And we're crossing out professional. Of our pertaining to as we've got that all crossed out. We aren't going to have that. As a definition. Amendment number two. It would be section four, article A two B to read as follows. In addition to the aforementioned permitted uses, the following are permitted after the issuance of a special exception by the Board of Adjustment. Manufactured uses, we're crossing out corporate offices and we're adding in business offices. And industrial parks, which is already there. Amendment number three, that would be amend section five, article A, one F and G to read as follows. And that's under uses permitted. In the village business district one, no building or premises shall be erected, altered or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. Non F, we're crossing out retail business establishment and we're replacing it with retail establishment. Under G, we are crossing out personal service shop or service establishment and we're adding. Service establishment or replacing it with that. Amendment number four. We're going to amend section five, article B, one E, F. B, yeah, to read as follows, under uses permitted again. In the business district, no buildings or premises shall be erected, altered or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. And when we get to item E, we're crossing out professional and business offices and replacing it with business offices. Under F, we're crossing out retail sales services and replacing it with retail establishment. And under V, we're adding service establishment. Amendment number five. Amend section five, article C, one E, F and J to read as follows. Uses permitted, the village business district two, no building or premises shall be erected, altered or used. And no land shall be used for any purpose except. And when we get to item E, we're crossing out professional business or corporate offices, replacing it with just business offices. When we get to F, we're crossing out personal service shop or service establishment and replacing it with service establishment. And when we get to J, we're crossing out retail business establishment and replacing it with retail establishment. Amendment number six. And section six, article A, one D, six, eleven and twenty four to read as follows. Uses permitted, in the commercial industrial zone, no building or premises shall be erected, altered or used. And no land shall be used for any purpose except. When we get to item six, it's business and professional offices, we're crossing that out, replacing it with business offices. Get to number eleven, we're crossing retail sales and services out, replacing it with retail establishment. And item twenty four, it's a new service establishment. I'm assuming there's no objections so far.
You read them so.
Didn't get any time to object, you know, we're trying to get through here. So amendment number seven. Let's see. That's amend section six, article B two C to read as follows. And we're crossing out under that category permitted uses and replacing it with uses permitted. In the industrial park district, no building or premises shall be erected, altered. Or used, and no land shall be used for any purpose except. And when we get to item C, we're crossing out corporate offices and replacing it with business offices. And that would conclude. Our amendment up to amendment number seven. So. Anybody? Any comments? It is, it has been quite some time.
Second question is just a curious thing. Where does the restaurant fit in? What kind of scouts release that in these developments?
Well, restaurant is mentioned as. As a business, as a restaurant in wherever it is. So there's no, no question as to whether it's allowed or not.
So where it's not mentioned, it's not, it doesn't fall under.
That's correct. That would be correct. Yeah, yeah. It's called out, it's called out as a restaurant in the code. Yeah, but it's restaurant. There's also another variant like a drive through facility.
Retail services. And what? What service businesses on, we had those confusions that slide and language.
Good question. Okay. And I guess no one is on Zoom. I thought he fell asleep back there. Am I that boring?
No. I think what's going to happen though is people ready to hit the. So I'm wondering if there's a way. In the. I've always wanted some ballot, but let's say the intent of the. By the word is to clear is to make the language similar and. For that reason, the following changes that I'll offer. Something like that, something reamable that allows me to realize what you're trying to accomplish it.
I think that's. You can't, that's over here.
I think, I think that's where the voters guy comes in.
You can't change it. Yeah, it's in the guide, but you can't change it in that session. You can change it here, but that's, that's it.
This is random stuff. And yet there seems to be some. Some verbiage that says.
Yeah, we usually do and that usually falls on to. Our assistant here to write something up like that. And I'm sure that he'll write something up that. That will pretty much.
Yeah, you guys will see something in January of whatever I write up.
Yeah.
With this and the wetlands.
And yeah, that's something simple, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the voters guy will hopefully do that, but does everybody? Look at the voters guy.
The trap is that everybody with this table is exactly what we do.
Exactly.
And we're kind of running ahead of time.
Yeah.
So they're trying to read through the guys.
They're too big to read through. Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll see very soon.
Anything else? Then I will close the public hearing. And I think there was, there was a, no, I already closed it, right? Can you have a motion? Make a motion to, or you hadn't made that motion. Okay, motion by Michael York to. To accept our accept the changes in the zoning ordinance and put it on the town warrant. Yeah, one through seven. You're correct. Yeah, we're taking that number one, bringing it. Yeah, items two through seven.
So next, the first meeting. In January. You guys will be seeing amendment number one and then amendments number seven. Amendment number eight through twelve. One, eight through twelve. It'll be noticed. It'll be okay. Exactly, yeah.
Okay, again, that was a motion then by Michael York to move the amendments to the town warrant seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? You got something, Richard?
I was just gonna say I was editing, but.
Okay.
We've covered that by saying. In January.
And all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those opposed. Good, out of that. Brings us to. Well, continue on amendment, no, no way. Had in here, what was it? Planning board meeting schedule. Yeah, we had that before that.
We can knock it out first.
Yeah, let's do that. That's the schedule. It's listed, it's listed next. So we'll do that next. So we have our schedule in front of us. And. Runs down through the entire year. I just had one comment on it.
Yes.
And that's when we get down to November thirteenth, twenty twenty five. I'm suggesting we turn that to November sixth because that gives us an. At the last meeting in, in October, that'll give us two weeks to November sixth.
Yeah.
And then two weeks to the twentieth and on. It won't be that three week interval.
Instead of doing back to back like they're doing now, yeah.
So November sixth, and when we get to December, the same thing. Are instead of the eleventh, we have a meeting on December fourth. That'll be the two week, two week. Yes. Any other comments? Nope. Yes, and we want to do that.
That sounds good to me.
Let's have a motion to adopt the schedule twenty twenty five.
With those changes.
With those changes, yeah.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Brandon to adopt the schedule for twenty twenty five, seconded by Richard. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
That's going to change the application deadlines.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, well, I'll change the deadlines.
He's got a year to figure that out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll change the deadlines. Um, I don't know if you guys care, but the deadline is the deadline day, one P M. So I'm not letting them submit until five P M anymore. So I don't know if you guys care about that, but it's just.
No, no.
Openness.
That's.
Yeah, just letting you guys know.
Okay, done that. Now we're to the wetlands conservation district. They proposed amendments.
And please, there's a separate. The one in the packet is outdated. The additional paper that I put in front of all you guys is the updated.
Exactly.
Yep.
And that single one.
Yep, ignore the one in the packet for eight.
So what's the difference in it?
There are just some changes. A lot of changes from Cordell and.
He's already seen this?
Yep. Oh, okay. You have Cordell and Sherry. So they divided the comments on that version. So Sherry, that's the one that we talked about on. No, we can talk about them though now. I, I have, I have them listed.
Yes. Let's see, all of my notes correspond to the old set, so I don't know where the changes are.
They should align roughly. It, it's only white changes.
So bringing us to amendment number eight. And that is amend section. Seven, article B, one to read as follows. And that would be the Swansea, Swansea wetlands conservation district is defined as those areas of the town consisting of wetlands and. Any uplands, non wetlands within seventy five feet of any wetlands. For purposes of section seven, wetlands means an area that is inundated. And that's, we're keeping that the same, right? And saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support. And that under normal conditions does support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. Or as otherwise defined by RSA four eight two dash A. Colon two, and as it may be amended. If a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydraulic soil or hydroic soil rather, shall be evidence of a wetland. Wetlands conservation condition, uh, conservation district is sometimes referred to herein as, and we're crossing out wetlands or wetland areas. And adding in the W C D. So. Coming up to the top again. Probably nobody knows how I feel about this one by now, but I think that seventy five feet is too much of a taking of, of property. And the reason is because. That those wetlands there. You're having somebody, somebody has buildable property. They have the property rights. They've owned that land or. Purchased it or whatever. And that land from seventy five feet to the wetlands is. Now anyways, buildable property. And. You're taking that from them. And you're still having them pay taxes on it. And that's a right that they had and that they no longer have. And I don't think that's popular and I don't think it's fair to do that. I would say we should go to the state regulations.
But what isn't it seventy five feet for the state?
Yeah, the state, state is nothing. The state designated, you know, for the wetlands, but there is no. Seventy five foot or up to a hundred feet, because this could go up to a hundred feet for the primary wetlands, right?
I'm confused. I thought. I thought we were dialing it back from. Hundred and twenty five.
That's for a leach field and the state regulates the leach field, not necessarily the septic tank, but we're regulating the septic, septic tank as well. But that's seventy five feet. But anyways, again, the state requires no buffer like that. And that's what the town of Swansea has had. Forever. And. I don't know that it has really hurt anything with that. Seventy five foot setback, I mean, non seventy five foot setback in town.
So I'm, I'm sorry, but I disagree with your position on it because. When a person purchased land. They. Know what they're buying.
Exactly.
And it's a buyer beware. The state has the same principle. For any challenge. Uh, for tax purposes or whatever, going back, they only allow you to go back one year. But I'm, all I'm saying is when the person purchases a property. It's up to that individual. To know what your regulations are and also the realtor should know and being advised of them. So I, I just.
But how about someone who purchased a property under our current zoning regulations where there is no seventy five foot taking of the buffers?
And it's a grandfathered.
It is grandfathered, but they still can't develop it. Because that zone is there, right? Do you mean? Are we saying then that, for instance, that hot topic property over on Basil Road there? That's by a big wetland up there. So if this passed for the voters, they would still be able to build right up to the wetland or within five feet or whichever. Are we saying that? We're saying that, we're saying that they can do that. Because you know, you, what you're. Right, what you're grandfathering in is if the building is already there, they're close to it. Well, let's just for arguments purposes, say so. Then what you're talking about grandfather really doesn't work. That person has purchased that property. And. The rights to develop it. And if this goes through, you've taken that much of their property and pretty much put it right out the window. Of developing it. That's what I'm saying about buyer beware, buyer beware. If this is passed, of course, you would know that you're purchasing a piece of property with seventy five, perhaps a hundred foot. Buffer area that you can't do any, can't even mow it, can't do anything in it at all. So that's why I think it's unfair.
But then there's the question of. Is it an effect? Overall to the.
Yeah, the community or something, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Versus an individual, right?
And is it?
And. They get to a point where. It gets mucky. The individual has X amount of rights, but for the benefit, betterment of the community or. The wetland. If we, you know, restricting it to seventy five feet in the long run, maybe extremely beneficial.
How do you prove that? Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying.
No, I know you're trying to be devil's.
Well, because those wetlands have existed. Prior to our zoning in this town and they're still there now, unless they aren't there now, but they're still there now. And I'm saying. How has all these years since the forties of non seventy five foot setback? Armed those wetlands, we'll say the one we're talking about again over by Basil Road.
I think we'd have to look at a property where something's been built, right? So. I don't know if this is a case or not, but actually my travels, I went down Basil Road and there's a paving business there.
Yeah.
And it looks to me like there's some wetlands down the hill and that paving business is right up against it. Now, I don't know that paving business harmed that wetland or not. But it might, it might.
But that's my point. We don't know. I mean, we're taking somebody's land without even having, being able to prove, able to approve, prove it rather, sorry.
Part of this is, is has to do with evolution. You know, uh, because we're a lot more built out than we used to be. And. There was a time when, you know, we had bigger lots and just more space and. You know, less infill development and whatnot. And I sort of feel like. This. These changes are in reaction to development pressure that's, you know, keen is really built out, right? And there's a lot, I mean, witness what's been happening in Swansea. So there's a lot more development pressure and I think more marginal pieces of property. Are, you know, to cite our recent example. Um, that's been a marginal piece of property for a long time, right? They're being. We're being asked to review applications for development on those kinds of properties. So I think it's. I think, I think, I just feel like land use in Swansea is evolving. Um, just because there's a lot more people living in town. And it used to be, yeah, we could stay, sure. Do whatever you want.
Thought the population's still the same within, within reason anyway.
But it's, it's, you know, property is, I mean.
Thousand people probably or three thousand.
Yeah, could be. I don't know, but I know it. It's still rising up there. But you know, that's.
But we have a lot, you know, we're, we're. Where we used to have like this village nodes of development, you know, when you were a kid. Now it's like spread out more over the entire town. Just there's just more pressure. To use it, the land that we have. So. Our wetlands are more threatened by virtue of that greater development. Pressure, that's how I feel.
How do we undo? If we say, okay, you can build up to the edge, how do we undo something down the road?
You can't, like what, what, what would happen from that? I'm just, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, what happens?
Randy, but I'm sorry, that's been posted on the.
The one, that free one that you guys had done, preferring that, you mean? The one that you guys had done correctly. Yeah, I read that.
Yeah, free to you.
Yeah.
Yes, it did not cost the taxpayer.
I know.
So you did read that.
I did, yeah.
So you did see that there has been. Effects to the wetlands. Now we haven't paid somebody to go in there and. Study to the nth degree, that would cost a lot more of what the impacts have been. But it's clear that some of the functions and values of some of the wetlands in town where there's been a lot of. Development or, um, you know, just mowing right up to the edge of the mountains have been impacted.
How?
Out.
Yeah.
Other than somebody's opinion saying that they've been affected.
Well, this is, this was a scientific study that we hired.
Yeah, but you just said that he was not able to go in there in depth and.
Right, well, I can't like tell you how.
Yeah, but you just said that he was not able to go in there in depth and to determine like what happened, so how does he know?
How much insect species or whatever have been done, but for overall trends, we know that the numbers of turtles, the numbers of salmon, the numbers of frogs. Have gone down, oh, the state over the years, the trend has been like this, and a lot of that's habitat.
They're indicators, I mean, it's not that we, you know, we're not. Thinking out of we're one individual salamander, but the fact that there's no longer habitat to support that kind of life.
Right, and you, you need upland habitat, so. I, I can't point to a particular scientific study right now, because I didn't come prepared to do that, but. You need upland habitat. To some extent to protect what's using the wetlands, um. It's. You know, for something like a spotted salamander, it goes back and forth, for something like a turtle, it goes back and forth between uplands and, and the lowlands and the wetlands, um. For birds, um. And mammals and things like that, if you build right up to the edge of their habitat, you're forcing them farther into the wetland to get away from you. So you've created this unusable part of the wetland for the animal, I mean, you're a deer hunter and. You know, watch, what deer do you going back?
Do they only travel seventy-five feet from the wetland and back to the wetland, is that what you're saying?
Seventy-five feet, I actually talked to a number of people about this, about this, they're like seventy-five feet doesn't seem like enough.
Well.
And it's not.
It would be a hundred feet in the prime wetland, right?
This is a, this is a compromise, so, um, the reference I made to, I think, for instance, it was called the, um, it was a website about. Um. Which bay, there's some bay in New York that, um, has a website that they've developed some regulations around the bay. And, yeah, I think it's great, babe, um. And they've looked at what. Kinds of buffers are required to protect what? And just like I had mentioned at the last meeting, just having a thirty-foot buffer is enough to protect it temperature-wise, so if you think about. That all-purpose storage that exists now on Basil Road where there's pavement basically within a few feet of the wetland. You think about a hot summer day and you think about a big rainstorm and all that pavement and all that roof. That's had all that time to heat up in the ninety-nine degree sun or whatever it is that day, and then you've got a big thunderstorm that's washing all that hot, hot water. Down into the wetland, what is that doing? If you've got a brook there, that's affecting your fish eggs, it's affecting your insect eggs, that could be affecting your turtle eggs, whatever else is there.
For how long?
That's hot water.
But for how long, you know, you get. You get nighttime, yeah, you have radiant cooling at night, I mean, it's not going to affect it for the rest of the summer. Yeah, it might affect it during that rainstorm.
Yes, so these are the effects that build up over time, the damage.
But the temperature goes back down at night.
Okay, but in the meantime, something probably been shocked and it's.
Probably, or could be, Jay.
Oh, yeah, we, sure, there's predators and concerns, biological concerns, they're all kind of concerns for runoff and the road control. Uh, you know, if they're, if the building is close to the wetland. Then i- if there's less opportunity for runoff to percolate into the soil, which will then carry some soil material into the wetland. And make the wetlands border change and actually decreases its, its value as a, as a stormwater manager. Uh, absorption of groundwater, uh, there, there are other values to this besides. That, let's, let's talk about the value of the wetland as a recreational space. Um, you, you have to get to the wetland to enjoy it, so having some space around it allows there to be access to it. You also have to, uh, uh, be able to enjoy it without being absolutely in the middle of it, so again. You, you have to be able to walk around the edges. I don't, I don't know if there's a scientific reason why seventy-five feet works. It seems to be an appropriate number, it may not be an appropriate in all cases. But certainly for someone above established water, that we have in Swansea, water areas, we're talking about every little puddle is, is out there. It, it may be a very important figure and, and maybe. Maybe there needs to be more study, but the concept of protecting those waterways is really important. And it's, it's a conflict, as you point out, between the broad community rights and the community's rights to enjoy it, benefit from the value as well as what was provided.
Mark.
So, you know. My, my concern is the aquifers, I mean, not, that's not the only, but that's the primary concern, because once something gets into the water, it's hard to get it out, right? So, you know, an example is, um, where I lived in New Jersey, there was a storage area. Who had barrels of leftover whatever from World War Two, it was on a cement slab in a building, totally forgotten about. The slab crap, cracked in a couple places, the barrels rotted. And the stuff leached into the water. Wasn't discovered until people were complaining half a mile away. That they would cook their macaroni and it comes out blue. And they're like, well, why is this happening? Because the water looked clear. It was the chemical reaction that made a change. What was H and O, H and orange? It was in their water. Their well water. We have a lot of people on well water here. We have a lot of people over the years, who knows what they've done on their property, what they stored where, whatever. By setting a precedent like this. Starts to address that type of action, it makes people more aware. Um. And that, that, that's my concern, and that, and that's a real story, um.
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, it is, but it doesn't sound like that seventy-five foot radius would have helped that any, right?
Well, it might have helped.
Those people further than seventy-five feet away were affected by it.
Because it got into the water.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, you're saying, you're saying seventy-five foot is there to.
Getting into wetlands makes it a lot easier to, you know, make its way into the aquifers.
It has been studied that. The bigger the buffer that you have, it's a filter, it's picking up runoff, it's picking up chemicals, it's picking up sediment. Um. It's helping to filter whatever running off of the property, whether it's.
Which it shouldn't be, you know, if, if the planning board does their job properly, there should be nothing extra running off that property, you know, we look at drainage.
If it's a commercial development, but if it's a, you know, a home, right? Then.
You're talking about pesticides or, or anything?
Whatever, people keep on their.
I mean, it might happen on a smaller scale, but it's still.
The other day I drove by, I think it's our, it's gonna be, there are Basil Road here, the all-purpose storage. And they had backed a whole bunch of dump trucks up to the edge of the wetland they were parked, and they had lifted the, the dump bodies. And it was like they were letting them get washed by the rain into the wetland. I don't know what was in those dump truck bodies. But they were in the back of the parking lot.
Probably the same thing that's on the roads here.
What's that?
Probably the same thing that's on these roads within those bodies.
Can already be useful.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think that's something that we really want in young, whatever.
Probably not, but if it doesn't wash up the roads, it probably doesn't wash up those truckloads.
It's what, it's just as damaging. Meaning a little bit, you know.
Yeah, that issue with Wilson Pond.
That's because if we actually have that black road, we cannot have. Nobody wants to slow down on, on, you know, salt, you know.
You know, do you have another thing I think about, and, and this is just because I'm monitoring raining all the time, so. Um. Just because I've got livestock and pastures and whatnot and. Um.
Wetlands.
Wetlands, but the nature of our weather is changing. And so what I've been experiencing, seeing the last ten years or so, yeah, last summer was dry, but when we have these rain events. They're huge, okay, and suddenly, like, I'm always looking at the South Bridge, probably are too. You know, um, we get, we got an inch of rain this last event at Honeyville, okay, I've got my rain gauge out here, and. Granted, it's this kind of year and the ground's a little more impervious, but, but. These big flooded areas, um. Fill up really quickly now, okay, because. Um, we do have a lot more surface area that's developed, and so in a way, we almost be protecting. Property owners to force them to not develop right up to the edge of their wetlands because. Um, the wetlands are, are sponges, you know, that's where they store the water. And if we're getting, you know, four, five, six inches of rain in one event, which we have been doing for years. Something's a place to go, and those things fill up quickly. But not consistent, you know, so we'll have some years where we'll look according to the soils and the plants and whatnot, it'll look like the edges in one place. But then suddenly we get these huge, you know, we get our thousand, you know, rain events, which we see. And. Ground has to absorb that water.
But we're not talking about eliminating the wetlands at all, keeping them the same way they are.
But, but, so protecting property, you know, if, if this is a way to. Discourage development very close to the edge of wetlands, then in a sense we're protecting that people who are doing that development.
Against that hundred foot building or a fifty foot building or whatever, but, I mean. What is that really going to protect?
Well, if the building is right up next to Washington, that soil will suddenly be super saturated, and you can, you know.
Not if the engineers did their work properly, they've tested the soil, and the soil is no good for building, then they are going to build on it. That's the whole idea that, what we see in the planning board here too. But, you know, let's, uh, we've kicked this thing around enough. So how about ten feet?
We, we try, we have to try to find and balance the need to protect the wetlands, I agree you got it, but we also got to protect people's property rights. And remember, in our constitution, both states in the United States, it talks about individual property rights, it doesn't talk about community rights at all. Those are something we've made up and it's a good idea, you know. Community rights, but it's not really a stretch to have, so if these people have to pay taxes on land they're not allowed to use. Is that fair?
Well, you can get dispensation with, with current use, you don't have to pay taxes on your wetlands. Right, I.
You do pay taxes on them, you just don't pay.
It's very little, like twenty-five bucks a year.
Say that, that footage right there, that of a wetland, so they have to say that.
Certainly can do that, yeah, in your, in your current application.
Say that, because I don't say that.
Um, you, it's a paperwork that you send into the town, that's super easy to, if you have wetlands on your, on your property. You should not, you can enter them into current use, you should not be paying. Oh.
Well, you're gonna have to pay this.
No, no, not for wetlands, as far as, unless things have changed.
I don't, I don't.
I am, I don't either, but what's the minute, you don't know what the minimum is on that? I don't have any wetland either.
And years ago, when I was, you know, doing that paperwork for the town, there wasn't a minimum for wetlands, but, you know, we should double check, right?
Yeah, but we should check and see if that setback, whatever, that will be come up with, is considered part of the wetlands.
And if the state allows, you're saying because of the state school tax and.
States.
Yeah, well, and again, bringing back to the state, they require no setback there for the, this is for the entire state. They certainly control the wetlands and with their wetlands bureau and all that, you know. Their dredge and fill permits and all that type of stuff, you want to do anything by a wetland, you got to go to that state. But, uh.
They don't think of a ten-foot setback, but who, what property that's.
One property, and you mean our setbacks for the town is twenty feet, um, twenty foot setback from the border, you know, from someone else's property, that's twenty feet there?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about if someone has a wetland, not necessarily a property line, but just a wetland on their, on their property. Um, that's what we're talking about, seventy-five feet from that into their property.
Just a quick, I'm so sorry, uh, just a quick for, uh, qualified lands. Uh, for current use, a tract of unimproved wetland of any size can be entered into current use. Uh, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
So the other thing we have to address is the, uh, what we'll put. These properties into non-conforming lots or non-conforming structures, that's the other thing we have to think about, because then. It's a problem for the property owner, yeah, they're grandfathered in, they got that thing there, but as probably you know on the Z B A, anything non-conforming has to come across you guys for a variance. You've seen a lot of that with Wilson Pond and so on and so forth, so. It'll create that as well. Which is another hard.
You're talking about perfectly described by, by saying that, um. We're changing the preferences, um. But, but on the areas that, maybe you can satisfy a minimal lot area and set by requirements, you know.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about a, a current lot that has a building, we'll say ten feet from the wetland. And now we put it at seventy-five feet, uh, as a, a border area there, so.
Doesn't it supply a new construction?
It does, but what we're saying is that if you put it. If, if the town votes, not you, but if the town votes to bring the seventy-five foot, um, border area there, which nothing can be in. Other than if it's a hundred foot or less square, the building I think is in here, but if something is in that, that means it's, it automatically is a non-conforming lot. It's grandfathered in, they don't have to tear it down, they can keep it there, but it's non-conforming. So if you want to expand it or do something to it or whichever, you just can't go out and get your building permit, you got to go to the Z B A to get a variance. To allow you to expand or whatever you want to do to your barn or house that's within that seventy-five or a hundred foot setback, which again is a problem. In my opinion.
It's, it, well, I had to look at that process in my house too, so I don't change, I don't, I think. Kind of like box in order, but I think the, the, the whole idea of. Of, uh. Perhaps we need to look at. How does the state define the wetland, does it define it as?
Exactly as we have right, right here.
Exactly.
Exactly, word for word. There's a little bit extra in, in what you guys have presented, but exactly word for word out of the RSA's is what it is.
So if, if he is a town, if I're the wetland is including that, plus a little area of, of, uh, yeah, the exterior of it. Is that, are we in state law?
I don't think so, I don't think it does, no.
Allowed to do more than, that's right.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Saying that, we're not. When we say a wetland for Swansea is defined as. The state wetland area plus buffer, we're not changing the state law in a way we can't do, we can't go into that.
Yeah, you can always go more, you just can't, you can't do it.
Because the.
It's pretty special, because Swansea has one of, I've been told, has one of the best aquifers in the state.
I'm sure it does.
So we are learning that if you, if we agree that wetlands are worth protecting, the wetlands themselves are worth protecting. And that wetlands are important to our aquifer. We are now learning that you can't really protect a wetland in isolation. You have to protect some upland with the wetland, if you really want to protect the wetland, and you really want to protect the values and the functions that it brings to the town. You have to give it a little space to breathe, you have to give it a little space to work. You can't just say, okay, we're gonna build right up to this wetland and surround it with parking lots and buildings and habits, so continue to do the functions and values that we're asking it to do. That it's providing to the town. So if we really want to protect our wetlands. We'll better protect our wetlands than what we're doing now. And our wetlands are what's protecting our, or what's supplying our aquifer. And if we value that aquifer and we want to protect it right, then we'll take the advice of the experts that we just hired. Telling us. That having a buffer and a vegetated buffer. Is the best way to protect our wetlands and protect our aquifer and ultimately protect ourselves.
Yeah, it could be the best way, but. The state doesn't think so, and, you know, I'm coming from that too, you know, I, I see what you're saying, that is correct, that is correct, but if it. I feel if they really damaged the wetlands, since they protect the wetlands, if it really damaged that, that buffer area not being there, then they would have at least a minimum buffer area. Like they do for the septic systems there, they have the seventy-five foot septic system to a wetland. They set that up, but nothing else. And again, I'm, I'm coming from. Part of why we're here on these boards here. Because we're elected on these boards by the people, obviously. Who, um, want us to or expect us, or don't have time to read all the stuff that we have to read. And they may or may not understand some of that stuff, and they expect us to research it and understand it. And then they also expect us, when we vote on it, to vote with their best interests in mind. And again, as you know where I'm coming from, I don't think it's their best interest in mind to take some of that property, so. I'm still of that opinion.
Yes, it's a tension, it really is, it's, it's. Uh, you know, at one extreme or not, you know, one end of the continuum, it's to have. Oh, you know, I own my land, I can do whatever I want to do with my land, and at the other end, it's, um, you know, sort of. Claiming as a town that we really value our water, you know, I mean, that's really one of our amazing assets in this town.
It is, but it's not only the wetlands, you know, that contribute to that, a lot of the recharge, I would say more recharge area is on the bottom of that hill over there. Because that's where that, where that, um, seam of land hits the seam of the mountain coming in there, a lot of recharge. Right in there into the wetland, I mean, that wetland's into the aquifer, the wetlands. Are there, and they're, they've kind of formed. A liner in the wetlands, in the bog areas and all that type of stuff, because initially they were lowlands, that's what happened, and the water goes into a lowland, you can see this on a mud puddle, and it pours around here. Water goes into lowlands, it brings to fine, fine sediment, organic. Water goes into lowlands, it brings to fine, fine sediment, organic material, and it starts to build up in there and forms a seal in there. And pretty much you've got a swimming pool in there and the water seeps very slowly. It seeps through it, but it seeps very slowly through there. As compared to, we'll say, lands by the mountains or even actually the top of the hill right here or something like that, so. Yeah, there are recharge area, but there are better recharge areas. And I'm not saying that we need to disregard the recharge areas of the, the swamps or the wetlands or whatever. Again, I'm saying about the buildable property around it. We think there yet. I don't know, we don't know that, but we'd need to research that.
Signate it yourself. You map it out yourself, you know, what the wetland is. You make your application.
Yeah, you, you do, but what, what I think Mike brought up is that, is the state gonna let you take that kinda land and take it out of the tax um, bills there that sent goes to the state?
Actually, it's the selectmen who are over, who are supervising that decision. Because the selectman or, you know, the town administrator does review those applications.
Gonna have to look into that further, but uh, we need, we need to get beyond this one. So what are we gonna do? Are we gonna go seventy five feet? How about ten feet, like I said before?
Very happy to respect the work, the conservation, I feel like Conservation Commission has done a phenomenal amount of, of really careful conscientious work to arrive at this recommendation. And I didn't have to do that work, so I'm very happy about that. But I'm very grateful to you guys for having done that work and, and done the research and, and worked with um, experts and authorities in this area and researched other towns. Um, I feel like you've got a really solid um, justification for what you've arrived at and I feel like you're bringing this expertise to us and I wanna endorse it. Because this is, this is the best information we've ever gotten on this topic before, so.
You're talking about that study?
The study and, and the conclusions and the recommendations that follow from it, so um, I, I just really respect what you've done and I appreciate it and I, I wanna, you say we should do this, I think we should do this.
Yeah, and we're not saying, not saying that they didn't put a lot of work into it and that they're, they firmly believe what they, they're doing there and they did do a lot of work.
And I, I understand also that it's a compromise number two. You made that clear to us that I think you would have happily asked for a bigger number.
Didn't it come from Fitzwilliams? Don't they have seventy five feet? But a lot of this came from Fitzwilliams ordinance, I think, right?
Said he thought it was a good example of a tiered ordinance that
Was pretty familiar.
More protection to the top hundred percent of wetlands in town and then a baseline of good protection to the rest of them.
Again, it's, it's a figure taken out of thin air.
And I, as I was mentioning, the, the, the study that they did where they came up with the information for Great Bay was ninety eight feet. Was the spot, sort of sweet spot that protected most of the functions and values of the wetland. Three hundred feet was what protected the most often wildlife habitat associated with the wetland. So if you really wanted to protect your wildlife, it was three hundred feet. So we felt like this was a pretty good compromise and not lifting this out of the air.
Yep.
Those are all, those are all.
But at least they're set by the state. I mean, at least the state said that.
State meaning is on what the state law is, I mean, is necessarily on the cutting edge.
Yeah.
That makes sense, given what.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you brought up the shoreline protection and yeah, that is in state RSA's, so everybody goes by that. But this one isn't. So what are we doing? We voting on something? Somebody gonna make a motion? We're gonna move this along? We got other stuff to do here. You wanna make that motion?
Yes.
What is your motion?
My motion is that the planning board accept the recommendation of the Conservation Commission to um, recommend to the voters this amendment to um,
How about just stick to the seventy five foot buffer? I have another thing to add into this thing, or not add into it, just discuss with it. So you're talking about, you recommend that, that we keep the seventy five foot buffer?
That we accept the, the Conservation Commission's recommendation of the seventy five foot.
Okay.
To wetlands, to wetlands.
Need a second. Saying by Mark.
Okay.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oh, sorry, any discussion? We've discussed it all, okay, so.
Thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye. So yeah, bring your hands, because we know we're gonna get a close over. We have one, oh, you aren't voting. You aren't, you aren't seated, so. Oh no, you are, I'm sorry, you are, yeah, sorry, go ahead, vote. I mean, confused here, okay, we got one, right, one, two, three, four, and all those, four, four, and all those opposed. That might be me. Three, so motion carries. So, the next thing I had on that, and it was just a small thing at the bottom of that paragraph. We're talking about um, it says if a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydroic soil shall be evidence of a wetland. And I just wanted to add in there, the presence of hydroic soil as determined by a certified soil scientist shall be evidence of a wetland. That's probably implied, but it probably should be said that that's how you're gonna determine that that soil indicates a wetland, so.
Do you think that, I mean, number two, I think you feel said.
It does, yeah, we have it in there. We have it in there further down, right? I mean, you know, you're talking about um, how a wetland's determined on amendment number nine, correct? But we're still on number one. And it just says, we're talking about if a site's vegetation has been cleared, the presence of hydroic soil shall be evidence of a wetland. So the property owner's gonna say, that's not hydroic soil right there. And you guys are gonna go on there and say, yeah, that's hydroic soil right there. So you need to have it in there that as determined by whom. And who determines that would be a soil scientist, because they dig down their eighteen inches or whichever and determine what the soils are, say whether it's a wetland or not.
So that would allow this um, this section to stand on its own, basically, is what you're saying. You wouldn't have to refer to the following segment to where it describes.
Well, it's, you could move that to the other section there, but it's just, if that statement wasn't there, we wouldn't need that. But you're saying that if somebody cut it all down, saying that, no, that's not a wetland, and the Conservation Commission says that, yes, that is a wetland. Who's gonna determine it? You guys or the property owner?
Yeah, I think you had something in here earlier that we might cut out for the state of property.
You might, but it should be where it's needed. This is where it's needed.
Be something put back that says the soil scientist.
So parentheses as determined by, are they licensed?
Professional soil scientists.
Yeah, professional soil scientist, yeah.
Professional soil.
Be right after hybrid soils there.
Right. I've got it in here too.
Okay, as determined by that, okay. That was the only other change I had on that. So. See, with the two amendments, amendments of seventy five feet and the amendments of as determined by a certified soil scientist or however however rewarded it, any other changes to that amendment number one? I mean, number eight. If not, we need a motion to move amendment number eight to our public hearing. Our warrant, article public hearing, which would be the January something or other.
I'll make that motion to.
Okay. Motion by Mark to move amendment number eight.
Modified.
With, yeah, with the uh, modifications to our meeting on.
January.
January ninth, okay, it was right there, yeah, January ninth. Alright, that'll be our public hearing for these articles. Uh, you second that?
Yes.
Okay, second by Richard. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Okay, amendment number nine. See, here we are. This is add section seven, article B two, read as follows. And this is determining the wetlands. Okay, it says wetlands include but are not limited to any freshwater wetland, which includes marshes, swamps, bogs, and wooded bottomlands. Determinations of the boundaries between wetlands and uplands shall be made in accordance with the methods. And it says outlines, should say outlined, right? Oh, oh, I have, I must have the wrong one. There are two of them. We gotta, Scott, you gotta not do that, I mean.
Well, I mean, that, I, it was changed.
Yeah, yeah, so, or, or at least let me know what's changed. So let me get back to this. Let me just read it to see what the difference is here. Oh, I'll just read that one. Okay, wetlands include but are not limited to any freshwater wetland, which includes marshes, swamps, bogs, bernal pools, and wooded bottomlands and any surface waters, including rivers, streams, and intermittent streams. And the land under said waters, accepting fourth order streams and designated rivers, lakes, and ponds covered by section seven, shoreline protection district determinations of the boundaries between wetlands and uplands shall be made in accordance with methods outlined in the nineteen eighty seven U S Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual Y dash eight, seven dash one and the regional supplement to the Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual North Central and Northeast Region, version two O, or as amended. Have you ever seen that, what they're talking about? Have you ever seen that manual, what they're talking about there? Take a look at it online sometime. That's.
Scary?
Not really, no, it's not scary, but it, it really is very technical as to how they determine these things. So anyways, that, that's a big one right there. So let's see.
That's gonna slow down the voting process, huh?
Just reading one is gonna slow it down, yeah, so. Discussion, discussion on that. Any discussion on that?
Touching it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let's, let's keep that one in mind, because we can have a, a motion to do most of the rest of them there. We can mo, we had a motion on every single one, but if there's not much discussion on that, then we can just continue on to the next ones. Wanna do that? Or discussion, everyone, next one. Amendment number ten. This is men, section seven, article D, to read as follows, uses permitted. Uses permitted in the wetlands conservation district, provided that all required permits have been obtained are as follows. Please, so we're crossing out water impoundments, to the extent that wildlife considerations will allow and construction of wells for water supply. We're taking that whole thing away and we're adding in construction of wells for water supply or man-made ponds as permitted by New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. We're crossing off item number two, which is the drainage ways, streams, creeks, or other paths of normal runoff water. And we're adding in a new number two, which is wildlife habitat development and management. And I did have an addition on that on my, and it might be somewhere else, because I don't know what else is in there, but I had in that one under the management, including fences, because Mark, you brought up that, that the city of Kane is looking to put a fence near the runway. And isn't that wetland somewhere over there?
It is.
It'll be in the, so. So if they can't, you know, if we don't have fences in there, then they gotta go to those guys to get a variance with that fence up there, so. You guys are looking at that, are you, are you in favor of them putting that fence up or no?
You could, you could just randomly put a fence across the well, but I think you should need to go get permission or variance or whatever requires to do that, because um, you know, you're, you're bisecting potentially a, an important wildlife habitat or creating a barrier that's gonna be a little cluttered full of stuff and created a number, you know, you can't, you shouldn't just do that as you think you want.
Anybody else? Leave it out? Leave out fences, okay, so. But Mike?
Say that, that I think that someone who are looking at variance would decide whether this was a reasonable ask or not. And in the case of the airport, it might be, I'm not saying, but I feel exactly, it might be a reasonable ask regards to somebody else. So I think it's a case by case basis.
Are we, do we know how much of a?
Leaving the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we know how much of distance is required from the end of the runway to be allowed to construct a, a fence?
We don't really need to get into that. I just brought that up because Mark brought up one of the other meetings. We've got a bunch.
They're either okay, or you're gonna have approvals, but there, there, there are several different approvals they are looking at. The one they favor uh, is, is the right distance, the right, right distance from runway, but those in a couple places uh,
You'll find out when they come along. And that's just to keep deer off the run, right, correct? Other animals too, okay. Yes, probably so. Run out there. So that was number, the new number two, which was number three. So now we got to the old number four. We'll be renumbering those afterwards, okay, I'm, I'm.
Well, no, they're, they're numbered correctly.
Okay.
It just, it looks, it just looks weird, it looks crazy.
So that's a new number three, the wildlife habit.
Yep.
Okay.
No, sorry, uh, that's, that's the new number two.
New number two, okay.
Next one's a new number three.
Next one's a new number three. Okay, I see, you got it, uh, number three there. Alright, let me just get to my coffee here.
It's like the bouncing ball.
Okay. So, brings us to number three. And we're crossing out parks and such recreation uses as are consistent with the purpose and intent of section C. That's gone. New number three. This is allowable uses. Okay, conservation, conservation areas and footpaths, footbridges and boardwalks, providing for pedestrian recreational uses such as fishing, hunting, hiking, bird watching, and nature study provided. A, said structures are constructed so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water and B, the natural contour of the wetland is preserved. Any comments on that one? I'll check my notes to see if, I don't think I had any comments on that one either. If there are no comments on it, we will move along. Then we're moving along. This brings us to number four. Let's see here. Yeah, that's a new number four, right? That was number five, three, four, yeah. Okay, number five, we're crossing out conservation areas and natural trails, okay. New number four, open spaces as permitted by subdivision regulations and other sections of the ordinance. A number six, old number six was forestry and tree farming in wetlands as crossed out as an, as a use. New number five, forest management and tree farming within seventy five feet of wetlands consistent with best management practices published by the New Hampshire Department of Resources and Economic Development and the UNH Cooperative Extension. Let's see, so, old eight, old number eight, agriculture in wetlands crossed out. New number six, agriculture within seventy five feet of wetlands where it does not impair the function and values of the adjacent wetlands consistent with the best management practices published by the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture. Markets and food, that's a new one. So that's within that seventy five foot buffer, right? You're saying, you're talking about agricultural uses, okay. Any discussion on that one?
Best management practices, but is that is that always gonna be the entity that's gonna be issuing those best management practices?
That's a good question, actually.
That would be, you know, for tying it
Yeah.
As, as, by the appropriate state agency or whatever, you know, if there, if there would be a more vague way, we could whoever's in charge of issuing those best management practices.
It's a good note.
I, I just know that I've looked, sometimes I, just for fun, I look up some of these things that we cite and like, they don't exist anymore or.
So do we wanna hold that one until we find that out, Victoria, or do we wanna just continue?
Let's keep moving forward.
Could maybe instead of a best management practices published, it could maybe say as defined by New Hampshire Department of Agriculture.
Okay, let's leave it like that then. It's close enough, because we know what we mean anyways.
If, if, if we come up with something.
Our lawyer thought it was okay. Uh, Cordell thought it was okay. But it's, it's still a good note.
Seven is way down there. So we're crossing out old number nine, which was the construction or reconstruction of fences, footbridges, uh, catwalks, wharfs, and structures that enhance the site as wildlife habitat provided. Uh, and Friday, again, these are all crossed out. Provided said structures are constructed so as to permit the unobstructed flow of water and the, be the natural contour of the wetlands is preserved. Again, not allowed. Uh, number ten, we're crossing out that one too, which is the old alteration of the surface configuration of the land by filling or dredging, provided that uh, A, again, crossed out, the alteration enhances the wetland wildlife aspect of the site. B, we're crossing that out, the natural contour of the wetland is preserved. Eleven, we're crossing this out, construction of streets, roads, other accessways and pipelines, power lines and other transmission lines. And we're placing, replacing that with a new number seven, which again is under uses permitted uses. Maintaining, repairing or replacing an existing. And lawfully located structure or public utility, provided that the work conforms to the general standard, uh, standards adopted in this section. And that was amendment number ten, I think, right, all of that was number ten, yeah, okay.
I feel like I haven't tried to add that, I don't see it there now.
Streets and roads.
Um, where it says structure or public utility, I thought you were gonna put it off the way, streets and.
Uh, we can, yeah, uh, so lawfully located structure or public utility, well, we.
We mentioned that, Chair, we mentioned that that last meeting that we're at, you know, about that, about, because there are sometimes streets and public ways that do have to be in there, but. We had thought about making just that, construction of streets, roads and other access ways as a special exception for for that maybe. Not an, and not an actual use. Do you want to do that? Or just leave it as an allowed use?
We would need to add a special exception, we're getting to that, but. We don't have a special exception section.
No, we don't, but that would be it, with that one in there, okay, but do we want to do that, a special exception or or no? Or do we want to just add it as allowable use?
Well, Sherry and I were talking about this, uh, when we met.
And what did you come up with?
So I don't. I don't know, a special exception is the way to go, um, a special exception implies that it's permitted with an extra layer of protection essentially. Uh, these things wouldn't be permitted, they would. If you wanted to do it, you need to get a variance, and I don't think a variance is necessarily a bad way to go if you want to do this. Uh, I just wanted to wait for your input.
So. So. Leave it out. Because a variant, again, a variance, those guys would be looking at it. Conservation Commission would be at the meeting and all that business.
When it comes to wetlands, I think variance, it it adds that extra layer of review that you guys I think want.
Yeah.
Yeah, we 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 already, those didn't satisfy the basic idea of.
Exactly.
Of the ordinance. And so that means that the ordinance is basically protecting the weapons, does this.
Right.
Use. Dangerous levels or.
Well. Yeah, there's a more criteria than that that you used, though, right?
The good thing about a variance is that they they need a hardship, and if somebody has a hardship, they should be able to get a variance.
But one of the things is doesn't satisfy the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you're missing one, then the thing's out.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is if if the basic ideas protect the weapons.
Yeah.
Then you look at it and say, this is this is available or.
Yeah. So, well, I don't know what, how you guys feel.
Well, if we back up a step, so I think this right here, we're just talking about existing. That you're permitted to fix existing things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. If your your driveway is existing, but it it got washed out and you need to fix it. Are we allowed people to just fix it?
Yeah, that was already, we we went over that, yeah, that's already allowed, correct?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Maintain, repair and or replace the existing things. Um, in in that.
Um, instead of saying public utility, could we just say public? No, public infrastructure wouldn't cover a private driveway, so.
I just wanted to add, uh, and I I think we might add like streets and accessways or something like that.
Can we do public slash private infrastructure?
But that, do you think that would cover it?
It would, but it also might widen it, I don't know if that widened it too much.
I I don't, I don't mind where you use, I just wanna make sure that that that's that's covered, and it should be covered there.
So public utility roadways. Common roadways. When you're really talking about access. Or accessways, so public utilities or accessways. Whether it's a road or a driveway.
Be careful, it doesn't sound like public.
Yeah.
How about, uh, but lawfully located structure. Street or or accessway with all the utility.
So lawfully located structure, streets, public streets, public streets.
Accessways.
Do we have to say covered though, I guess?
Lawfully located streets.
Structure, maybe not street, I mean, structure, road or accessway.
We had a bar, yeah, we had before, uh, streets, roads and other accessways. Before, and we're crossing that out.
Yeah, there was something with the, uh, I I think, I think that's acceptable, yeah, I I think that's so, lawfully located structure, streets, accessways. Or public utilities.
Okay, yeah.
No, it it's.
Close to it, but yeah.
I know, it's it's very tough to read.
You're using the same wording?
Where?
Number eleven.
Oh, I see what you're saying, structure, streets, roads and other accessways, okay, it's already.
Same, the same word. Wording, right?
It is.
I think it is, you know, but now we hang down there.
We left roads out, but, yeah, it could be streets, roads. We need streets and roads, but that's the difference. The same thing, yeah, just streets and accessways.
Sixty minutes. No, I'm not, he's gonna fix.
All right, are we on to eleven? Construction of streets, road, because, yeah, this language is already cropped, it was already eleven.
We had it in there, it al- always has been allowed in there. But we're adding.
So pipe, so pipelines, power lines and other transmit transmission lines needs to remain crossed out.
Yeah, because that's covered under utilities, we have public utility in there, right?
Yeah.
That's covered under that.
Good word. But we're still talking about maintaining, not construction.
That's correct, yeah.
Utilities.
All right, read us the whole thing back, you done, got that?
Sure.
Read us the whole thing back right from number seven, maintaining.
Maintaining, repairing or replacing an existing lawfully located structure or public utilities along the streets, roads and accessways. Provided that the work conforms to the general standards adopted in this section.
Yep.
Yeah, sure is my.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay, see, that's the wording that we're probably gonna go by. Now we go to amendment number eleven. Number that one, right, number eleven, let's see, that would be amend section seven, article E to read as follows. And this is, uh, E, special provisions, we're crossing that out and putting requirements. And we're talking about no leach field, septic tank. Pump chamber or dry well may be located. And across the. Want me to read the cross out part, yeah, I'll I'll read that anyways, because people are on the line, listen, maybe. No leach field, septic tank, pump chamber or dry well may be located, and we're crossing this part out, closer than one hundred and twenty-five feet. To any designated wetland. And then we're adding in. It'll read, this is confusing, no leach field, septic tank, pump chamber or dry well may be located within seventy-five feet of wetlands. Expansion of an existing system to accommodate additional loading shall be considered new construction. In instances of septic failure certified by the town of Swansea help officer. The, and we're crossing this out, one hundred and twenty-five foot, and we're replacing with seventy-five foot requirement is waived. If a licensed septic designer certifies to the help officer. That A, crossed out, one hundred and twenty-five foot, added seventy-five foot setback is not possible. In that event, system can be replaced to state specifications. Good with that?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, good with that, number two. Wetland areas excluding bodies of water, we just added that in there, will not, we're crossing that out, says may. Be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements, we're crossing out and may not be used when applying. A residential density factor, and we're adding in, provided that seventy-five percent of the minimum required lot size is contiguous. Non-wetland and that the contiguous non-wetland area is sufficient in size and configuration to adequately accommodate all required utilities. Such as wellhead and sewage disposal for onsite septic tanks and leach fields. So let's see. So, the question on this one here is. Should we add in or make notation of that buffer area? The seventy-five foot buffer error we're talking about, are we letting them use that area as well, or are we excluding that from it? Again, it reads wetland areas excluding bodies of water. May be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements, are we including that seventy-five feet in that requirement there? I think we should, if we're talking about the wetlands, right?
I think we are.
But we, I think we need to make it clear, because it isn't stated in there, so.
This was the kind of give and take, right, so I think, yeah, I think.
I don't know what give and take, but we're just, we just have to clear it up. We could just clarify that, that, um, it includes the buffer areas. Or the, yeah, you define it as WCD, correct?
Yes, I was only saying wetland areas, you want to change that to the wetland conservation district?
Yep.
Land within the wetland.
So WCD, you're using a WCD.
So the WCD.
D.
Excluding.
Excluding bodies of water. May be used to satisfy minimum lot area and setback requirements, yeah, that includes the seventy-five feet, and that's clear, okay. Uh, let's see, down on here, uh, provided that seventy-five percent are. Did I go through that, I did go through that, yep. So the only thing we changed was adding the WC, I mean, WCD. So, we're good with that? Good with that, yeah. Okay. Uh, let's see, now we have, uh, number three. No new structure or building greater than one hundred square feet in area shall be located within seventy-five feet of wetlands. Number four, no parking areas may be located within seventy-five feet of wetlands. Number five. No underground fuel storage tank or tank containing other hazardous material shall be placed in the WCD. Number six. No soil removal or change to the surface topography of soil or modification of existing drainage characteristics. Including disturbance of water levels, water table or water runoff patterns shall be allowed in the WCD. Number seven, no dumping, discharging or placement of fill of any kind shall be allowed in the WCD. And number eight. No storage of junkyard materials or equipment such as construction equipment, vehicles or anything containing hazardous substances. Within the WCD unless housed in an allowed structure such as a covered garden shed. And we do have a number nine. Good with that one, number eight, right? Number nine. All wetland buffers. Area within seventy-five feet of wetlands will be required to maintain, uh, remain, sorry, remain in naturally vegetated state. Or be planted to native vegetation. Without regular mowing, spraying of pesticides or herbicides, or herbicides, herbicides, whichever you say it. Or other activity that will damage the buffer's ability to filter and slow water entering or leaving the wetland area. And that, that's all of number eleven, yeah. No comments on all of number eleven? Okay. Number twelve. Add section seven, article F to read as follows. At areas exempted from this section, this is a new section. Areas exempted from this section will include wetlands associated with currently functioning and maintained manmade. Ditches and stormwater treatment swales, number two sedimentation and and or detention basins or ponds. Number three agricultural and irrigation ponds or swales, number four fire pond cisterns and related facilities. Let's see, to be exempted, such features may not have been constructed as part of a compensatory, uh, mitigation or created. In what was previously or were previously jur- jurisdictional wetlands. And that's. That's the whole number twelve. Comments on that, nothing? Okay, so that brings us up to. A vote on. Article. Let me make sure I'm correct here. We've got number.
Through twelve, right?
We're doing. Bringing one back.
We're bringing the first one that we read.
Was it, and that was our amendment number eight, correct?
Wait.
That's coming back, is that?
Eight, eight, we approved. Yeah, we, yeah, and actually, I think we were only bringing one back from the previous set.
So we're going eight, yeah, there was number seven, no.
It was number one, it was very topical.
Okay, it was, yeah, it was.
That's the restaurant to pop the shop.
Yeah, okay, that's the one, so nothing in this one here, yeah, okay. So we are going on the full. Eight, yeah, because we we voted on number eight on the change in the number eight, we added something in number eight. Right, so we did already vote on that one, so we're going through number nine, the nine, ten. Eleven and twelve in their entirety.
And I I do have a couple of discussion topics for Sherry that we talked about in our meeting. Just before we vote on it, um, just to read, read the group here. Um, there is an option, did you kind of make it, we we brought up the fact that. You could get a variance to any of these sections, like you can with anywhere else in the code.
Yeah.
However, there is nothing in the code that explains the variance process. Um, do we want something in the ordinance? Do we want a section of the ordinance that says the variance process is, like? If if you don't align with any of these, um, ordinances, you can apply for a variance if you meet these criteria. Or do we just want to leave it?
Are these specific ordinance contained within our zoning ordinance?
Yeah, but our zoning ordinance, it doesn't, doesn't have a section called variances.
I thought it did, I'm pretty sure it does, it's in the back.
Time limits. Termin- determination of variances and special exceptions, time limits. Uh, special exceptions.
It is.
Criteria that is handed to them by the state if they have to.
Well, we're all governed by those RSAs, right, they're in the RSAs, and so what their criteria is.
Need of doing anything special.
We've probably got enough wording in here, and then we don't need that anymore, but it's it's always a good idea to have it in the zoning about the special exceptions and variances. Just for somebody reading through it, but I'm pretty certain it's in here.
Uh, eight, seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight, you got it?
I think, that's what you're looking for, I'm not so sure. There's a reason, I forget what the reason was.
That's not it.
It might even be good to put a little, just something referring to that session, say, if you. Off against this.
Richard's got a here on page seventy-eight.
Really, the definition.
Yeah, it's under a definition, right, yeah, variance. An act tells the board of adjustment, yeah, the terms and regulation will not be contrary to the public interest, where. Owing to a special, special conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the regulations will result in unnecessary hardship. And so that the spirit of the regulation shall be observed and central justice done.
That was the criteria I was talking about.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Those are the ones that they have to respond to.
They do, yeah, so.
It's, it's mainly seeing if we want to add anything to the wetlands. District, so any person planning to perform inactivity. Or conduct work within the WCD that is not permitted by this ordinance. And would require a construction permit, subdivision approval, site plan review, et cetera, shall apply for a special exception and much show. That no reasonable alternative exists, which would avoid wetland impacts and that detrimental effects of the WCD will be minimized. However, um. It was a good, it was a good. Thought, it's a good paragraph, it's a well-written paragraph, um, I had responded to that. Uh, my response to that was essentially if it's, if it's not permitted. Then a special exception isn't the avenue, a variance is the avenue, so. It was still a good, yeah, so you could, you could replace special exception in that paragraph.
Yeah.
With variance, but where would we, the the question is where do we fit it? I mean, I think under nine was our thought. Um, if we wanted, in, under, under this section would be where we would put it.
I don't think we ought to put it in, we have enough in there.
Would would somebody's want to do something over a permit? They will find that they need to get a variance.
Yeah.
I I think it's a, yeah, it's a good thought, but I I'm not really sure if it's needed.
Probably not. If they're working in or around the wetlands anyways, usually they're getting a permit from the state DES as well. Any of that stuff, any little dredge and fill or anything they're doing there.
Yeah.
So, um, you're gonna get those.
Yeah. I I don't, I don't think we need to write anything about a variance or special exception, but it did bring up another interesting point. Um, the fact that Swansea doesn't have a conditional use. A conditional use process or application. Is that something this board would be interested in?
Explain that, what do you mean?
Um. So you would have a conditional use permit. So. Um, so you would have a conditional use permit, so, conditional. Trying to explain it, not doing a good job.
That's why I asked you.
Yeah. I, I'm wondering if there's a reason why Swansea doesn't have a conditional use process.
Well, um, you aren't talking about our conditions when we approve something, right?
No.
Those are conditional.
It's kind of, it's kind of like a special exception, but it's not, it's not quite the same, um. Maybe this is a topic for next year.
But in, but in the process, they ask for the conditions that would justify especially.
Well, a conditional use is more so.
It's close to being the same thing.
It ki- kind of is, but. I, I'm not gonna.
Is, is, is given by the planning. And not the zoning.
But it's, it's, it's a condition of approval, not conditional use given by us.
But that, now that I'm saying it, conditional uses are kind of like a special exception, so I I'm trying to rephrase it in my mind. Let's table it for next year, because I, I don't, I don't have a good argument right now. It is. I have an argument somewhere, just not today.
So, we're going through. Again, we didn't have a motion yet for that, did we?
You have no motion, yeah.
No, now we can't.
I'm just, I'm just getting those, we had a discussion there, but you had no motion there, so again, we are number eight.
No, all right.
No.
Sorry, number nine, yeah, cuz we changed that, right, number nine through twelve, keep it straight, thank you. Got two separate sets of notes and everything, so, yeah, we need a motion.
Richard, just gonna make. From nine to twelve, as written.
Uh, are ready to go for public hearing on the ninth of January, okay.
Written or as amended, cuz we did change these a little bit.
We didn't change anything else, but that, that other number one is coming to another.
We added some words like roads, streets. I think as.
We did, yeah, you're right.
I would say as amended.
As amended, yeah, yeah, as amended, and then. The ninth, the public hearing on the ninth.
Requirements we changed for wetland areas with W C D, just have a tweet.
The small things, but, but it's ready for public hearing. Where it was what we're asking, ready for public hearing, cuz we can't change very much during the public hearing, only a little bit of wording, cannot change a meeting of them at all. So, we're sure that's what we want, and that's where we're going. I do need a second, everyone's Victoria, yeah, seconded by Victoria, is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor in Cape Town saying aye, aye, all those opposed?
Those notices will go out in a couple weeks. Notice will go on the twenty-third.
Conservation Commission did it all. We just argued with them, that's all. So, um, anything else, any updates or anything like that, Adam, anything for the tip, I didn't make those tip meetings, so I wasn't there.
A boundary exists, it's the same boundary you saw, it just looks prettier, so you guys see that in our next meeting.
Okay. Uh, that was, I think you must have brought that up, because.
Um, I'm going crazy over here, um, public hearing boundary line adjustments. By that, I mean, do we need public hearings for boundary?
We don't have, we aren't required by RSAs to have them, but we always do have them, but we don't have to, if it's, if the cost that we could save or something like that. But we still have to notify them the same way, whether we're having a public hearing or not, correct?
We do, yeah, so we something notice, um, but we don't need to do a public hearing notice, uh, but we do need to do a butters notices. Um, our subdivision, uh, our subdivision rules of procedure, our subdivision ordinance. States that public hearings are not required for boundary line adjustments that do not create new buildable lots. Um, I, I personally don't feel the need, though, I don't feel like we need public hearings for, for especially boundary line adjustments like we saw today.
We don't, yeah, I I agree too, we don't.
Obviously, a butters notices need to go out.
Yeah.
But we don't need no hearings for.
Yeah, we are required to notify in the same way that we do notify for public hearings, so that everyone knows. But we just don't have to have a public hearing, so it's kind of a formality, it's, it's either I'm saying we're in a public hearing or not, that's pretty much the difference.
Butters are still being notified, there's gonna be notice on the board still, but.
But, let's just have a vote by the board there, by a vote that, uh. We are or we are not going to have public hearings on boundary line adjustments that do not.
Create new building.
Create new building lots, which are we going to do? A motion for one or the other?
Well, I will make that motion, if if we don't wanna do this, then we need to amend our subdivision regulation.
No, let's, let's just have a vote, I'll make the motion that the planning board will no longer hold public hearings for lot line adjustments that do not create buildable lots.
Second.
Seconded by Richard, is there any further discussion? Although in favor, you can keep saying aye, aye, all those opposed? Okay, so you'll have to keep me straight, cuz I will open up a public hearing.
I got you, no worries.
Oh, yeah, let's hear from, from. No, give us the highlights.
I'll give you a couple of highlights.
Thank you.
Firehouse, the new firehouse we own is gonna hold in place of three and twenty-seven five million dollars.
What is it? How many, again, say it? Three point, three point seven five?
Three point seven five.
Okay.
We moved, the engine tool was supposed to be replaced this year, so we moved that back to another year. With the, with the okay from the fire chief, he says that the engine should hold together for another year. Uh, you know, the other thing that, um, I mentioned is the, uh. Range, as you know, last year, we see, I see was about to play money for the brand. But somebody got up in the middle of the blimp and raised a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the range. What we did this year, we put seventy-five thousand dollars contribution, but. The range people have to raise seventy-five thousand dollars, and we will match that seventy-five thousand, it has to be for the foundation. They didn't raise twenty, uh, ran for twenty thousand dollars, but the windows were stopped, we're telling them, you can't do the windows. Until the foundation is, is secure, because you'll just waste them up.
Right, so how does that work if it's appropriated? And they don't come up with their money, where does that go? But. But isn't it set, I mean, isn't the budget set and you're gonna raise a certain amount of dollars, the town votes on it, and those dollars are included in that? But what happens to it? I mean, you know, things sit in an account will. Yeah, that's right, and and it goes somewhere else.
Will invest it.
Yeah.
But the building is owned by the town, I mean, so you can probably sit in it during.
But, but they also, it's a, it's a complete match, it's not like they raise fifty, they they get fifty, it's, they have to raise seventy-five.
It, it probably should go into their, their fund that says they don't get it out until they get the seventy-five, and then it'd be spent on that building. Oh, well, good one, okay. Jay, do you have anything on the, on the fire department there? I haven't been to your meetings either, so.
Uh, yeah, I haven't been to each guy, and the business we're waiting for, for the. And they said the eighteenth, and it's not the eighteenth yet, it's not the week, so, but. We're hoping that they will go further, the K D's been sending out things that were sent to you as well.
Yeah, I saw those.
Details that I have no idea about the expertise, whether this material, that material should be used. And she's basically telling whatever she is, whatever she is.
She's been doing a good job there.
And, and, um, I'm waiting to see if, try to consider on that, but, um. No, nobody of the, of the five of us, the two firefighters who would be in, have, have it, so. We're just waiting, and I'm, I'm hoping maybe something will happen by one minute, but we'll see.
Great.
And I'm, I, I have a call in my brain, it's a term like all the week, but, um, I've asked him. I've asked him, uh, where those videos are, are they ready to go on the YouTube channel, are they ready to, for us? Guess right now, the only member of our committee who's posting on Facebook is Bob Roach. There, there you have.
That's his right.
Anyway, I'm, I'm not gonna get into that, I'm just saying, I'm allowed to, as like a committee, I, I, once I hear. It may be time for us to anticipate, cuz it's coming out, ask every one of the committee to start a list of the problem.
Okay. Great, thanks for the. Briefly. Okay. Anybody have anything else?
It's already done, I gotta, I can pull it up right now if we want to, but I can't show it to everybody.
No.
Yeah, we'll wait.
We'll look at it at the next meeting there.
You saw the, you saw the.
Maybe next Thursday.
Thursday, three o'clock, tentatively.
So, this is my last.
You're the best minute taker that any of these meetings that I've ever, I've been on the board for a long time.
Thank you, I know, we, we've been together for a long time, when going page was.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I may be here occasionally to help out, um, I told, um, Michael that I would do that, but they are advertising for a new minute taker.
Yeah, but, yeah, I feel your shoes.
You know, we're really, really good.
Thank you, Scott.
They're gonna be so bad.
Make a motion, oh, Richard makes a motion to adjourn. Is there any further discussion, all those in favor, they kept saying aye.